The one who was just at the ball field with five hundred and twenty kids.
Oh, darn.
The normal, the normal. She's coming up. Never go home.
Uh, that's next session. You only have to get up early.
Alright, I got you.
And we're going to move back. So it's all work. Alright, six thirty Monday, July the eighth, let the Grantville City Council work session come to order. Mr. Greshaber.
Uh, yes, sir. The first, um, item on the meeting agenda will be the public hearing. Now, that's going to be on July the twenty-second. But the public hearing, to hear public comments on the request to rezone ninety-six and one-twelve Arnold Street, tax map parcel ID GO three zero zero three zero zero three, GO three zero 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 three zero zero three A, G O three oh 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 three zero zero three B, and G O three zero 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 three zero zero two from R twenty, single-family residential to R six, multi-family residential. That public hearing will be on July the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. There will also be a public hearing on the amendment to the zoning ordinance adding residential and development appearance standards. That public hearing will also be on July the twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Both of these items have been before the Planning and Zoning Commission and received unanimous approval. Then we will go to the discussion on the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-four oh seven to amend the zoning ordinance to add residential development and appearance standards. Now, you will notice that it is in your agenda package. However, it is not in ordinance form. The city attorney, who's not present here tonight, unfortunately, had a death in his family. His mother died, so he's been tied up with that. And we wish him the best.
And he will have that in form by the time next meeting, so it'll be fine. The words, the meetings aren't changing, it's just the way it is, he has to create it. Any discussion on that one? Okay, move on.
The next item is discussion on the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-four oh eight to rezone ninety-six and one-twelve Arnold Street from single-family, R twenty, single-family residential to R six, multi-family residential.
Okay, any discussion on that?
This is the second time that the councilman clerk has left.
Yes.
When we started to talk about this. I don't understand what's going on.
He, he has a financial interest in that he, uh, does a couple of jobs for current owners. Therefore, he is recusing himself.
Well, why isn't he saying that? So it could be in the minutes. I mean, it's supposed to be at, the city clerk is supposed to.
Okay, well, he's refusing.
That he left, what time he left the meeting, and then what time he came back.
Okay, well, he's refusing, sir. Alright.
Has a reason.
Alright, any other discussion? Give him back. Okay. Mr. Greshaber.
The next item we have for your consideration, ladies and gentlemen, is discussion on resolution number twenty twenty-four dash ten, seventeen, the annual millage rate for assessment of property taxes. We have gone through the budget, and the millage rate will remain the same, five point two-two-eight. And when we talk about the budget, I'll explain the tax increase that that will cause. However, we think it is fair, considering the items we have to pay for, that we have no control over, and the increase, the cost of materials and supplies, along with labor wages.
And I want to combine this discussion tonight into both items since it really, until we get to the factual vote on the millage rate. We've gone through the budget, and Mr. Mills, who's in the audience, or whatever, there you are, has done a great job in putting this together. Folks, the bottom line is for our general fund, which is paying for the city to operate, not the utility side. For our general fund, the, the monies we're asking for are only six point eight percent higher than last year. And then the fact that we've had massive thirty-seven percent increases in insurance, the fact that we are, from our wonderful administration up in Washington, under throes of inflation that is incredible, that I want to commend the city clerk's office, Mr. Greshaber, and all the department heads for holding their budgets very tight this year, understanding, and a six point eight percent in, in the rate of a nine percent inflation is incredible. Alright? So any discussion on that part? I know you probably need to go through more detail on the budget, and we have two months to do so.
Just to reiterate, the plan is not to go up on the millage rate, to stay the same. We're just not accepting the rollback rate.
So I was gonna let Mr. Greshaber kind of address the tax side of it. I'm really kind of asking on the budget side, and I know you guys have got to go through in detail. Understandable, we have three more meetings to go through the details and ask you questions. And I will ask this, please, because I'm tired of burning up trees. Would you please remove the budget from this packet, please bind it, and bring it to every council meeting unless we have a change we have to make? So don't throw this away, and we're going to print no more budgets unless we have to make a change to the budget. Okay? Alright?
And Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Are these next few items on this agenda? Number one, my, I'm just not looking at my packet for this study session, work session, and I don't know how I'm supposed to expect it to do my job when I don't receive my packet and have it in my hands for a couple of days to go over my packet. And I requested that when the city clerk closes their office, if, if my packet's still there, they be left in the police department. Police department is open twenty-four seven, and I can go over there and pick it up. But they don't, they leave it locked up at city hall. I can't get to it. Now, I'm, I'm complaining because I'm getting really, really irritated. I don't have a current municipal code. I've asked for it, I don't have it, I have received it, I have been told when I will receive a copy of that. So I'm, I'm just putting this out here, probably for the second or third time. But I don't want to, anyone to expect that I'm gonna be doing an outstanding job, looking at these items, reviewing them, doing my research, if I can't have it in my, if I can't have my packet in time.
So we actually had the packets and the budgets on everyone's desk on Wednesday at twelve o'clock.
Pretty neat on everyone's desk.
Every one of your diocese had the packet sitting on it Wednesday by twelve o'clock. So you could have come in Wednesday when we were open, knowing we had a short week.
Mr. Mayor, it's the job of the city clerk's office, and I know this for a fact because I used to be a city clerk and I've talked to many city clerks, to get the packet to the council members and make sure they get it, even if I have to deliver it to them.
Well, we're not delivering packets.
To get the packet to the council members, because I work. You know, I'm a, I'm a federal worker, and I work. So for me to have to try to rush for my appointments and run down here and pick up something, that's unreasonable, especially they're gonna close Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. You know, it, this, it, it's not, it's not.
In addition, the packet is online and can be reviewed online. The budget's online.
I asked for access to a laptop, and they said, no, we can't give you that. I asked for access to a printer, no, we don't have an extra printer to laptop. So I'm expected to go online on a laptop and do my job. No, I don't think that's reasonable.
Okay, well, we have the packet ready, so let's, let's get back to the discussion.
City laptop to use.
Let's get back to discussion of the budget, okay?
Well, I just want you to know, I.
Okay.
This has been very difficult for me, and I, I don't know how I'm expected to do my job when I have to pay for everything.
You have to, you have to the last meeting in August to review the budget. So you've got fifty days.
So you feel it's okay? What's happened to me is okay? You don't have, you don't see no issue with it?
Well, it was very, I, I. I don't see that your other council members are complaining at the same rate.
Being shut out of all mail, communication, records, pay for what you, I need things for you to do my job. And I come down here and they, here's your invoice, you gotta pay for it. Is that reasonable? I'm having these problems, Mr. Mayor, and you should be able to help me.
I'm not even certain what you're talking about. I'm not invoicing, I have no idea what you're even speaking about. Well, everybody who submits open records has to pay for it, regardless of who you are.
For the record, I hand this to the city clerk, it explains what I just said. Please attach it to the minutes, I have a copy for each council member, and anybody else that wants, that really cares about this problem.
Can we get back to the budget discussion, please? Okay. Any questions on the budget?
I'm not prepared to discuss this, I'm sorry.
Anybody, anything? We got lots of deals. Okay. Mr. Greshaber, would you please discuss on taxes and the millage rate?
Yes, sir. As, as I've said, we set our budget on a millage rate of five point two-two-eight. The millage rollback rate is four point seven-nine-three. So there is a increase that the percentage, the rollback rate being four point seven-nine-three. The difference is, um, four point, pardon me, point four-three-five. So there's an increase, a tax increase, and it is nine point zero eight percent. And that equates to a proposed tax increase for a home with a fair market value of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is approximately forty-one dollars and seventy-six cents annually. That's a homesteaded home. And a non-homesteaded home with a fair market value of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is approximately forty-three dollars and fifty cents annually. So yes, we're having a property tax increase, but it's less than four dollars a month. That's calculated on a digest of real property of a hundred and fifteen million, nine hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. We will have our hearings. Our first hearings on the proposed tax increase will be held on Monday, August the fifth, twenty twenty-four, at nine AM, in this very council chambers. And all the council members are invited to attend. Our second hearing will be at our workshop meeting, or work session meeting, on August the twelfth, at six-thirty. And our final hearing will be at our meeting fourteen days later, on August the nineteenth, at six-thirty. Council members are invited to attend each and every meeting.
Okay, let me just, uh, a little bit more on the tax side of it. Again, we're holding the millage rate steady, we're not increasing the millage rate. Obviously, the increase comes from increased home value assessments. But also, it was interesting in the numbers we found, Mr. Mills, employees out there, there's also an increase in the valuation that is coming as a number of one point three million dollars for new construction in Grantville, something that we haven't had. And over the next several years, that number's gonna continue to go up, which is what we want to happen, to start bringing up our tax base. Where in the future, maybe we can look at cutting some military, particularly as we really expand our breadth. But that was encouraging to see that new, we have new construction, and that is factoring into this. Alright, discussions.
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
The, the city manager said something that was interesting. He said that the council members are invited to attend. What does that mean?
That in the public hearing, they're invited to attend. We encourage them to attend. If they want to hear what the public has to say. It's not part of a city council meeting.
So the public hearing that's being held does not require attendance of, of the council members?
No, it's not.
Well, who's, who's the public hearing before? Who are the people gonna speak to?
Well, I will be here, and Mr. Greshaber will be here, or Mr. Mills will be here. I would hope the council would attend so they could hear what the public has to say. It's not a man, it's not a city council meeting.
That's unusual.
And the comments, the whole meeting will be recorded, and if any of the council members can't make it, and they want to hear what the public says, we will put the meeting on a disc for them.
Correct.
I vividly remember what happened last year when I came to the public hearing. And I'm sure you do too. And I came up and sat in my seat, and the mayor told me to sit in the audience. Not that I didn't need to be up here. So I don't understand how you're saying the council is invited to attend, welcome to attend, and then if you come, you go sit in the audience.
No, we'll let you sit up here this year.
Is talking to the council, and you want, you had me sit in audience.
Okay, well, you sit up here this year.
I don't understand your attitude. I don't understand what you're doing.
What do you mean?
Because it's never been like this before, and it's not logical. If you have an.
I will tell you this, I attended a public hearing.
Public hearing, then the body should be here.
When I was running for mayor.
Addresses the body.
And in that public hearing, it took place in a senior center. The only council person who was there was Ruby Hines. There was no mayor, no other council members, and it was a public hearing. So I don't believe that there needs to be some formal piece to this. Certainly, whoever wants to come council, they can sit up here and listen. But then we have history of public hearings that aren't council meetings. So at that point, who was, who was, who was addressing who in that public hearing? Only one council member was there. The mayor wasn't there, nobody.
Well, this is my opinion, because we do not have the benefit of legal advice at this meeting. Regrettably, the city attorney could not be here. We cannot get a legal opinion about this, but I think it is, it's a violation of the code.
It's not a violation of the code.
Conduct public hearings of the city council, and the city council not being present.
Okay. Do we have any more discussions on the military? Okay, Mr. Greshaber.
The next item we have for your consideration is discussion on amendments to the utility billing policy adopted by the city council on April the twenty-second, twenty nineteen.
Okay. So I want to address this one, and I guess, as it came to me, it was, you know, we. So let me, let me give you a little bit of a, kind of a utility business and what we face on this particular day that we're talking about. So we send out bills, and people have a lengthy time to pay those bills. They need to pay them by the twenty-fourth of the following month. We collect ninety-eight percent of everybody who has to pay at that point. Generally, the numbers for what we call cutoff day range from roughly twenty-five customers to fifty-five this particular month. And so it, it's, it's just kind of a matter of factors, which I found kind of interesting. So what we have to do is we have to come up with a list to go cut people off. That's the only way we can incentivize them to pay their bill. So the list is produced in the morning, and the crews, usually it's two crews, heads out about nine o'clock in the morning to cut people off. Understandable that some people may get here at seven-thirty and pay the bill. We understand it. I will simply say this, after kind of reviewing it, because, because I don't think any of us, the utility business, anybody, feels that the, the spirit of saying, hey, don't cut somebody off if they paid that morning, because it's a waste of time, it's ridiculous to do so. None of us feel that way, and the problem becomes the logistics. The trucks roll at nine, someone pays at ten, they haven't cut you off at ten, but we have no way of communicating back to the truck, this person paid. Short of hiring someone with a telephone, calling every truck, have you got this person on this list? Or this person on this list? Certainly, if we, if we don't roll until nine, and we have people, and this happens, by the way, we have people that pay ahead, they don't get cut off. But understand, even if they paid at seven-thirty that morning, they're still late. They still should have paid earlier. And I'll bluntly say, we find it interesting that everybody, for the most part, seems to come up with the money to pay that day. So this is how we have to run the business to make sure we collect. I'm not a jet to the language that says, we won't cut people off if we know ahead of time that the truck roll. But if you put a definite certainty on it, like you have to, well, we're gonna violate that every time. Every time. If, if we really want to go that route, I think, I think the language should be changed to best effort. Best effort. And also, this is a short-term problem, folks. As you saw on your project list, we signed last Monday with Harris Corporation Software. That implementation will begin, takes them six weeks, I don't know why. And it'll take six to eight months, it's a very big, it'll create a customer portal. It'll also create an effective means for us to communicate with the customers. And they are customers, okay? As long as we make sure everybody gives us the proper email address, five days out, an email's gonna go out. You're gonna be cut off in five days because you have to pay your bill. An email will go out the night before. And we're gonna cut you off tomorrow because you have to pay your bill. I know some say they don't read emails, but if you're not reading your emails into year twenty twenty-four, I'm sorry. That's silly. In addition, once we get the electric meters, we're still having supply chain problems. Cutoffs will no longer be, with the exception of water, us rolling a truck. It will be a touch of a button to cut the electric power off. Likewise, a touch of a button to cut the electric power back on. So this is a short-term problem, I just want you all to recognize that. And recognize there are challenges with this. Discussion. Okay, discussion.
But yeah, as far as the other thing I have on here, you know, I do not believe that we should disconnect any utilities the day before city hall closes.
I forgot to address that one. We have that as a policy today.
Okay.
However, however, we all agree that we need to codify that.
Right.
We will add that as is, in writing. We do it today, as policy, but.
Any holidays, any weekends?
Yes, yes.
Absolutely. We never cut off unless the customer has a following day to pay.
Correct.
But we, but we will codify that. Yeah, we miss that. That, that, that is true. The same thing, let, let me talk a little bit more about the utility policy. When we prepare the cutoff list, the first thing we do is we do it the day after you should have paid, and we check the Dropbox. All Dropbox payments are recorded. So if you come in on the morning of the twenty-fifth, before we get to work at seven-thirty, we're here at seven, but by seven-thirty, we're looking at the Dropbox. If your payment is not in the Dropbox or online, yes, you stand a good chance of getting paid, getting cut off, even if you paid at eight o'clock. Because that's the way we work. Now, we certainly can delay cutoffs and everything, but again, that's not the way you run an efficient business. And we will codify that, that we won't cut off unless you have a day to pay.
Okay.
So then, what you're saying is that we need to set a certain time then, on the twenty-fifth. If you're not in by nine AM, you're on, you're going on the list, and that's it?
Well, okay, so here's, here's where it gets.
I mean, you know, I'm trying to, you know.
If you say, well, don't start cutting off till ten o'clock. Well, someone paid at ten, I wonder if they're getting cut off. The, the problem is if you try to identify the time you're gonna cut off, that, that doesn't work. What, what we're basically saying is that the list is put together, the trucks roll about nine o'clock. Hopefully, if you have come in and paid, or even online. I mean, the, the thing is, you might pay online at eight forty-five where the truck is going. We don't know that you paid. We don't know.
And it takes time for government windows to record that payment? And we have to have one person looking at it all the time? We try to catch them. Trust me, we don't enjoy cutting people off.
I didn't know that, and I was called for fishing, and we cannot have two days a month.
Totally agree.
You know, our pollists are running around disconnecting and reconnecting.
Totally agree.
That's exactly right. It is not efficient.
I mean, there need to be a list of each person had what, and then that way, you know, that made the city hall contact them as they look. Has it been disconnected?
Well, okay, so again, here's the problem with this is, we're not gonna get all the online ones. They don't always come in at the same time, and then we have to check them against the accounts receivables. And frankly, we don't, you literally have to have a person just sitting there watching and all come in with a phone. And, and I, I put this forward, I said, here's a solution, we'll hire a temporary to make phone calls all day. To the truck, to the bus.
I mean, you know.
We're really at that point.
What's more called for fishing then, and you're like having pollists work out there for two days, or are I doing that?
We're gonna look at everything.
Alright, I mean, no.
We're looking at all.
Hopefully, we'll have that portal.
And we'll have the, the meters at some point. So again, this is a short-term problem, but I just want to make it all aware.
If it's a touch of a button versus actual person going out.
Correct, yeah.
It can be fixed a whole lot quicker.
And I wish those meters would get here. Okay.
Mr. Mayor? We've had quite a little discussion on this, on this for the utilities. And I'm currently on the utility committee, but no committee meetings have been held. And whenever I do look on Facebook, I see all of these comments about people having problems with the policies of the utilities, where they've been on, have medical devices, and they can't have their utilities cut off, or as a life-threatening situation. I don't even know if the city has a list of, of the people in the community who are on these.
If they brought their paperwork up here, they did.
We did.
Okay, so I feel that there are more issues than what we're talking about right now, about how the city's gonna continue to collect money from the customers. We need to be thinking about the upcoming challenges of getting these, dealing with these forever chemicals in the water. Dealing with all the leaks, the water leaks. All of this is the utility company.
What chemicals in the water are you talking about?
Forever chemicals, they're called forever chemicals. Forever chemicals. They're called forever chemicals.
We haven't had a chemical issue in over two years.
I'm talking about when you sent notices out to the residents about exceeding the limits of the.
We haven't had a TTMH issue in two years.
Well, there are new regulations coming out and I think we need to be ahead of the, ahead of the game. And we need to be thinking about it. We need to get, we need to get information to make sure that we are giving safe water to our, to our citizens.
So.
So I think we need to have, we need to have a special meeting on this.
I don't believe we need one. The water's provided by Cowee to County, by the way. The city of Grantville does not provide water, comes from Cowee to County. And I trust in the county to do what they're supposed to do to make sure our water's in good shape, just like they take care of our sledge ponds.
That's why we signed the contract.
That's why we signed the contract.
Well, I feel like we do need to have a committee meeting and we're supposed to, according to law, have committee meetings, and the utility committee is very important because we're talking about giving, having policies that make sense that are fair and that we're giving good water, selling good water to our customers.
Well, I believe we are, so.
I mean, at any given time, anybody up here can bring the policy, amend it to the, to the, to the, you know, agenda and remember to do it, vote on it and put it into effect. I mean, is that simple?
The policy's right online. Roll the policy down, read it, and if you have something you want to discuss, we'll talk about it. But I, I don't see that there's a great deal of issues with the policies we have.
And you don't, you don't think there's any merit to what's on people are complaining about?
The only, the only complaint I see is every now and then the issue we just talked about, which we're addressing. That's the only thing I ever see.
You, you don't know anything about the smell of the water?
No, I don't have any issues. I drink the same water, folks. I bathe in it. I drink it every morning. It doesn't smell. I'm getting it from the same place everybody else. Uh, if one person thinks there's smell, they can come down and talk to me about it, but I, I don't smell anything. The water smells good to me.
Well, I think I, I'd feel more confident if we had people that are actually using water, making the decisions about the water. But I know that we, our staff does not live in Grantville and they are making decisions about our water. I would feel more confident if we could get advice from experienced consultants, people that, that we hold accountable for advice that they're given.
Okay, let me say that again. Our water is, our water is provided to us and we contract to take care of that water in our sledge ponds by Cowee to County Water and Sewer. You're not going to find better experts.
I still, I disagree with you, Mayor. I think we need to have committee meetings and spend some time talking about this issue with the utility company that we are supposed to be running. The city council is in charge of the utilities and the shouldn't be.
No, that's incorrect, State.
We should not be giving that over to somebody else to make the decisions about it.
All five of us up here use city water.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
So we should be the ones making the rules and we should be the ones that are listening to the customers. We, we drink this water. We give it to our children. We bathe in it. This, this is important.
We're just discussing the utility bills right now. That's how we make decisions about the utilities.
Well, I'm going to start talking a lot of the deals.
Bring up something, fix it. I mean, it's open. Spend some time checking other cities out that have policies and see if you can adopt it to, like big Grantville. I mean, me and Joseph do that all the time.
It's supposed to be a committee effort, not one or two people getting together and doing, it's supposed to be committees. It's supposed to be going things according to the decision.
Okay. Any more discussion on this? All right, Mr. Grishere.
Okay, the next item you have is discussion on the appointment of Hilda Monia to serve on the Historic Preservation Commission for a term to expire December 31st, 2025.
And I don't see her in the audience, but I know she's one of this. So, any discussion?
Who's nominating this person? Who's nominating Hilda?
I don't know if she is nominated or she came out and picked out a form herself.
Nominated by?
Let's see.
David Clark.
David Clark.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so nobody else on this council is permitted to nominate anybody or even know that there's going to be an item on the agenda to make appointments or advertise the vacancies?
Again, the agenda was put out last week.
And we.
I, I received it.
We clearly knew that we have open positions.
Yeah, I mean, there's two council meetings ago.
Why is it that one council member is making all the nominations, has complete control over all of our committees? I don't understand that.
These are volunteers.
Because I'm the one that goes out there and gets all the people that want to volunteer. I go to their house and sit down with them and talk to them and say, do you want to help the city grow?
And when I, when I present someone for a nomination, you won't even second my motion.
Well, because that one person is not an anti-gentleman.
And I can't even get, I cannot even get a person nominated, accepted and voted on for a committee.
I mean.
And this is the game we're playing up here with one or two people making all the decisions, making all the appointments. It's got to stop. It's not, it's not the way to do business. This is a city, a municipality, this is not a private company or corporation where one or two people make all the decisions, all the appointments.
You can vote against these people, just like we can vote for them.
Do you think that's going to go anywhere, Mr. Brian? Do you think that's going to go anywhere? If I say I've got someone that I would like to nominate, would you, would you second my nomination? Would you second my nomination?
Okay, we have a point of order, so let's bring it back to the discussion about Ms. Moon. Any discussion about Ms. Moon? Okay, Mr. Grishere.
The next item for your consideration is discussion on the appointment of Kathy Southern to serve on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term to expire December 31st, 2025.
She's in the audience? You won't say anything? You don't have to.
I didn't know I'd be in.
Okay, you don't have to. We have you. All right, any discussion?
And this person's being nominated by?
David Clark.
David Clark.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Grishere.
Um, the Senior Activity Center will be closed on Thursday, July the 11th, at 2024 to attend the senior luncheon at the Coeida Fairgrounds.
Okay, with that, the work session is officially adjourned. Now we will have a special call meeting on Monday, July the 8th. The time is roughly 7:10. Do I have a motion to move to executive session?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, and I had this question for the city attorney. This is a special call meeting. I did not receive a notice. I did not receive a notice. According to the charter, 12 hours prior to the meeting, I should be receiving a written call, which means a written notice from whoever's calling this meeting. I don't know who called it.
This meeting was called by the three council members, not myself. It was sent out on, on Wednesday or Tuesday.
It's not supposed to be sent out, Mr. Mayor. It's supposed to be a written call. It's the only way you can have a special meeting is by written call.
It was advertised and it was put on the.
That's fine. It's, it's, it's fine to advertise it, but the city attorney's not here to make you aware of a code section that says if you're going to have a special meeting, you have to give a written call, that means in writing. You have to come to each council member and give it to them.
No, we do not.
You have to serve it on them personally or leave it at their home.
That's only if it's 12 hours.
And the city manager knows that. He knows that.
Okay, do I have a motion to move to executive?
Summon.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.